Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to another sunny day in Lakewood. It's time for the Lakewood City Council Study Session Agenda for this Monday, April 8, 2024. So we have three significant items tonight for discussion. The first is a legislative update from our state legislative session this past couple of months, and we'll have our governmental affairs specialist Shelley Heldur from Gordon Thomas Honeywell Governmental Affairs give us an overview. Come on up, Shelley. Welcome.
All right. Good evening. It is good to be with you all tonight to provide an overview of the 2024 State Legislative Session. Before I get started, I do want to note that tonight's presentation is going to be brief because there was a lot that happened in the short 60-day session, and you have a much more comprehensive written report in your council packet. So tonight I plan to cover four topics.
And for the benefit of the audience and the rest of us, it's all pretty much a synopsis up above, right? So we can follow you along with the screen?
Yes, yes. Feel free to follow along the screen. So the first topic I'm going to provide is an overview of what happened during the 2024 session. Then we'll drill down and talk about the outcomes of the city's legislative priorities. I'll also cover a few items that were, that outcomes from the city's policy manual, and then we'll talk about next steps. So as I mentioned, the 2024 session was a 60-day session. It was the second of the biennium. And the second year of the biennium is always the short session, and it's intended to be shorter because they only have to adopt supplemental budgets rather than biennial budgets. And so that's the the primary objective. In addition to adopting the supplemental budgets, they also considered over 1,500 bills and ultimately passed 376 into law. And you can see the chart on the screen there. That's a comparison of, on the far side is the bills, the dark blue, the bills that were introduced, and the light teal is the bills that passed. In this session, the middle is the bills passed versus introduced in 2023 and then in 2022. And the number just continues to grow. There are, there are no shortage of ideas for bills out there. So I guess that's my plug to say if we have ideas for bills, they are welcome. The Democrats continued to hold strong majorities in both the House and the Senate. So there was no change to the political dynamic in Olympia. But the new dynamic that existed in this short session was the introduction of six initiatives to the legislature. And initiatives are simply bills or pieces of legislation that are sponsored by the people rather than sponsored by the legislature or sponsored by legislators. And when the legislature has initiatives in front of them, they have three options. They can choose to adopt the initiative as written. They can choose to adopt an alternative, both the alternative and the original end up on the November ballot. Or they can do nothing, and the initiative goes to the November ballot. So for the six initiatives, they chose to adopt three of them and to do nothing with the remaining three. And so those remaining three will be on the November ballot. So as mentioned, the state has three budgets, the operating, the capital, and the transportation. The operating budget is the largest of the three, and it pays for all state agency operations. The largest expense is the K through 12 education system. To develop the supplemental budget, the budget writers use the February revenue forecast, which compared to the revenue forecast that was used to develop the biennial budget had an increase of $1.2 billion. The supplemental budget allocates an additional 2.1 billion, bringing the total biennial budget to 71.9 billion. So I think it's just helpful to recognize the the difference in size between the biennial budget, which was roughly 69 million, and the supplemental, which was 2 billion. It's very, very small. One significant item to note in the operating budget is a request that was led by Representative Levitt to eliminate the cost share for cities. Right now, cities have to pay 25% of the cost to send a new recruit to the Basic Law Enforcement Academy. And because of the change made in this year's supplemental operating budget, cities will no longer have to pay that 25%. And that'll take effect July 1. The next is the capital budget, and it is the smallest of the three. It helps fund public and nonprofit construction projects. And the supplemental capital budget is 1.3 billion, and it brings the biennial capital budget to 10.3 billion. The additional capacity for the supplemental budget primarily comes from the Climate Commitment Act as well as federal funds and the Model Toxic Control Account. There was really limited bonding capacity available for this supplemental budget. So if not for those other funding sources, there would have been a very small supplemental budget. Because so much of the capital budget is funded with the Climate Commitment Act, many of the investments are contingent upon Initiative 2117 failing in November. The Local Community Projects Program, which is how the city has historically received several awards. And there was 72 and a half million allocated to that program. And so if you consider that there's 49 legislative districts, it's roughly 1.4 million that was awarded per legislative district. A really small amount, considering how much how much some, how much Lakewood has historically received through that program. The third budget is the transportation budget. Of course, it funds the state's transportation system, which includes highways, ferries, active transportation, transit, as well as all transportation-related agency operations. This was by far the most constrained of the three budgets. The supplemental budget allocates an additional $1 billion. And it brings the biennial budget to 14.6 billion. Most of the new spending is directed to just a handful of areas, specifically cost overruns on two mega projects, the 520 Bridge and I-405, fish barrier removal, capital improvements to ferries, and highway preservation. And the new spending primarily comes from federal funds, Climate Commitment Act revenue, and advancing of funds from the Move Ahead Washington Package. So again, because much of the transportation budget is is using Climate Commitment Act dollars, many of those projects, the funds for those projects are not available until January after we know the outcome of the initiative. It's worth noting that despite the supplemental budget being $1 billion, traditional transportation revenue sources, which are the gas tax or licenses, permits, and fees are down by 8% since the biennium began, which is roughly 56 billion. So moving on to talk about the city's priorities. The city had two priorities for the short session, and this was strategic as well as pragmatic. It was strategic because our legislators only have so much capacity in a short session. And narrowing the list increases their chances of success. It was also pragmatic because the city was successful in receiving all the other items on your legislative agenda in the first year of the biennium. So these, these were the remaining items that were left undone. So just as a reminder, in the first year of the biennium, there was $309,000 awarded for the signage art and interpretive information about the Nisqually Indian Tribe at Fort at Fort Stillcom Park, $500,000 for affordable housing at Living Access Support Alliance, and $621,000 for the continuation of the Community Partnership Program at Western State Hospital. So the two priorities you see on the screen were the items council wanted to see the legislature make more progress on during the short session. So I am pleased to report there was some progress. On the topic of providing tools to address auto theft and property crime, the most significant action the legislature took was to eliminate the 25% cost share for agencies. I mentioned that was something that Representative Levitt took the lead on and is substantial, not only for Lakewood, but for every city in the state. There were a handful of other, other, there were a handful of other bills introduced that would have provided increased increased funding for recruitment and retention for law enforcement agencies. One through a credit against the state sales tax and another offering jurisdictions the ability to increase their sales tax. But none of those options passed. The city also asked the legislature to make refinements on vehicular pursuits. And it's likely news to no one that they chose to adopt that initiative. And it changes the evidentiary threshold to engage in a vehicular pursuit to reasonable suspicion that the person has violated the law. What's maybe not as commonly known is that the legislature also allocated $400,000 for a study to collect data related to vehicular pursuits. And part of the report is supposed to include recommendations for what data should be collected, like to have standardized data for the legislature to be able to make informed decisions and and policies related to vehicular pursuits. That report is due to the legislature in June of 2025. So one could assume that perhaps there will be no changes to vehicular pursuits until after then. The city also requested ongoing funding for therapeutic courts. This was a difficult one in a supplemental year. The state had already allocated 9 million in the biennial budget to grant programs for cities. And since not all of those funds had been drawn down, it was difficult to demonstrate the need. But cities are being encouraged to track all their costs related to recent changes in law so that there can be a stronger case made for the need for these funds over time as opposed to just this point in time during the transition. The city also requested ongoing funding for co-responder programs to support the city's behavioral health contact team. And again, this was challenging in the supplemental budget, but there were some important policy changes that were made related to co responders. First was House Bill 2088, which extends the liability protections afforded to first responders, and it extends that to co responders. And this is an important policy because it it helps attract and retain the workforce to support the co-responder field. And then the next item in that category is House Bill 2245, which was sponsored by Representative Bernosky. Ultimately, the bill didn't pass, but there is funding in the budget to do much of what the bill would have accomplished, which is create a credentialing and co-response, co-responder curriculum, and that's going to be developed by the University of Washington, again, with the intent of building the co-responder workforce. And then finally, on the topic of juvenile interviews by law enforcement, there was one bill introduced that would have allowed a juvenile to waive their rights to having an attorney present, once they were, of course, informed of their rights. The bill was never scheduled for a public hearing. So our second priority during this short session was changes to policies to increase the geographic equity of individuals released or discharged from state facilities. And in developing this priority, the city identified two ways that the state could make progress on this topic. The first was to prioritize securing housing and treatment facilities in the five underserved regions of the state or and/or to institute fair share policies for discharge planning from state hospitals and secure community transition facilities. In response to this request from the city, Representative Levitt convened a meeting with DSHS to discuss how to address the inequity. Because based on the report that was provided last year, one of the main facilities that's used for discharge planning, primary housing facilities that's used is adult family homes. One of the ideas that emerged was incentivizing adult family home providers in underserved regions. Their adult family home council was brought in to kind of vet the idea, and it was, while there are many other challenges besides capital costs to start an adult family home, the idea was encouraged. We weren't able to have it come to fruition in a short session, but there's definitely interest. And I think there's opportunity there to work on it over the interim and and advance it in 2025. The last item that I'll note in this priority is House Bill 2096, again sponsored by Representative Levitt. It creates a requirement for DSHS to provide information to local jurisdictions prior to the agency entering into an agreement with a housing provider to be a less restrictive alternative. Ultimately, the bill did not pass, but the budget again includes funding for the agency to have a special commitment to center communications manager to support information sharing between the agency and the the jurisdictions where a less restrictive alternative is being considered. And I did fail to mention that in the report, so I wanted to make sure to mention it this evening. Okay, so as you all know, in addition to the priorities.
Sure.
So on our priority items around public safety, one of the, in addition to asking you to act on our behalf, one of the things that we did is the mayor initiated a regional discussions with a lot of the jurisdictions in Pierce County. You know, and they, and they, and they, they sent a letter and they did some other things. How was that strategy received or 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 ignored, if that's what's, that's what happened?
Yeah, that's a good question. I do think that the convening of the the region was really appreciated amongst the legis, amongst regional legislators that wanted to engage in the issue. I did hear that they more would have wanted to participate in the meeting that was pulled together if there had been more notice. The the legislature took a similar approach. Because there had not been progress that many had hoped for, there were some members of the House Democratic Caucus that convened the Public Safety Caucus and Representative Hackney from Taquilla and Representative Rule from Watcom County. Both House Democrats pulled together this Public Safety Caucus because they wanted there to be more conversation and more opportunity to work through the legitimate problems that had been unintentionally created as a result of recent laws being passed. And so that that caucus was House members, Senate members, and they included, because they had heard from so many jurisdictions, they included mayors. And Mayor Whalen participated in in one of the meetings. I do think more communication and more conversation helps.
Was Mayor's initiative unique in terms of regions within the state, or were there other similar type actions? Or were we sort of adopting a strategy of our own that affected our legislative delegations? But that it wasn't the same kind of message that was being heard by legislators from around the state?
I know that the jurisdictions in Snohomish County did something similar the year prior. And I don't know if they did anything leading up to the 2024 session. So it was not a new concept, but I I do think it is helpful when state legislators see that there is a common perspective and a common request from an entire region. I think the other thing that I'll add is that some of the city's legislators are going to be coming to an upcoming work session. And honestly, I'd be curious what their response is to the question. So I'd encourage you to ask them.
Well, I guess my concern was in, in June, there's coming up, there is the AWC Annual Convention, which is going to take place in Vancouver this year. And if if that is a discussion that either formally or informally we can have with representatives from cities from throughout the state about, you know, this is a strategy. AWC always advocates saying, communicate with your legislatures and tell them what you want to do. But they tend to encourage you to do it city by city. And and if the, if it's time for us there to speak to cities broadly to say, get together with a, with a common message and then do it in a way that that legislators know is a common message to be able to go and do that. On our, on our pursuit question and perhaps on the, on the, on the auto theft question, things to do that, did the fact that there was an initiative that the legislator had to act on, take precedence over doing something legislatively? And I mean, and and if two questions, is if that doesn't pass, then then this is something we're going to have to then go back again in a year for more legislative asking? Or if it does pass, are we going to have to defend against efforts to undo it by some in the legislature?
Well, well, the vehicular pursuits initiative did pass, so it'll, it'll be law June 6.
Yeah. But is there a timeframe by which legislature can then can work to undo that because it was an initiative and wasn't signed by the governor?
Good question. So if an initiative goes to the people and the people pass it, it cannot be amended within two years except by a super majority of both chambers. If an initiative like the vehicular pursuits initiative is passed by the legislature, it's just like any other piece of law, and it can be amended in the next session. My opinion is it will not be amended before, at least before the report is made available. That was just directed to be completed.
So would the window, if there were folks that wanted to roll it back and amend it backwards, it would be the next short session, not the next?
They, they could do it in 2025, to be clear. My opinion is that they would not do it before they have the data back from this report that they've just commissioned. I think that they, they would want to be able to stand on some data if they are going to make changes to it.
Okay, and then I just had a question about the geographic equity and discharge from state's facilities. And it sounds like there's recognition of the problem, but the question is whether money can solve it or whether it requires policy that changes the behavior of DSHS to solve it. And they seem to adopted the money thing and the other thing that goes down the road to be able to go and do that. In your opinion, in terms of the discussions about that, we have always in our encouraging, improving the system, talked about people getting returned to their county of origin. And is there would a better argument be county of choice? Because it seems that, you know, part of our problem is that DSHS is choosing the county for people. And and it isn't necessarily what what they would want, but that they may not necessarily want to go back to where they have reputation problems. I don't know. Is this, and I know that Representative Levitt is certainly and and others are advocating for it. But for a number of years, we were always hearing they were, we were sorting, asking them to go down there and play Don Quixote because the rest of the state didn't see a problem. Have we made some progress on the rest of the state seeing a problem, or are we still there?
That's a, that's a difficult question to answer. I think what I'll, I'll share is discharging to county of choice is essentially current practice. Though the number of choices is very limited because there are very few providers, both housing and treatment. Depending on the individual's need, they need housing and treatment in a certain, a certain combination, and only a handful of counties have capacity for that. Additionally, the provider has to be willing to accept that individual, and then the individual has to agree to be discharged to that facility. So discharge planning is, it's, it's challenging for DSHS. And so to put more restrictions on that discharge planning process, they are, they are resistant to that. Which is why our strategy so far has been to remove restrictions and to try to increase the options that DSH has for where individuals can go. I don't think we're winning that. I don't think we're winning that argument with other communities in the state. I don't know that many other communities understand the, the inequity that exists. I think for this one, we have more work to do.
Okay. And I guess my last question just has to do on our expressed concern about and suggestions about what to do to try to get a handle on juvenile crime. It appeared that that didn't resonate much with, with anyone. Is that another one of these things that most of the state doesn't think that that's, they're having that problem and that it's, us as a very urbanized area are seeing it, but it's not that prevalent?
I think this is one where the, the regional group that's been convened on public safety has, and this, this seems like an opportunity to coordinate on data collection and, and storytelling to help better support why this change is needed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay. So in addition to the city's legislative priorities, you all have a policy manual and that states the city's position on a variety of issues that may or may not come up throughout the legislative session. So I am just going to touch on four topics this, this evening. Of course, there's many more that are outlined in the written report. And the first is in the category of housing and homelessness services. House Bill 1892, which is sponsored by Representative Levitt, creates the Workforce Housing Accelerator Program. This is a program that's going to be administered by Department of Commerce to provide loans to eligible organizations for the development of low income housing between the 50 and 80% AMI. Right now, we have the Housing Trust Fund, which supports funding for housing for individuals with incomes less than 50% AMI, but there's a gap in that 50 to 80%. And so this program is designed to fill that need. Senate Bill 6173, which is sponsored by Senator Nobles, expands the use of $14.06. So as a reminder, $14.06 are funds from, they're a credit against the state sales tax that the city gets. And under current law, they have to be used to serve individuals who are at or below 60% AMI. This bill says that the city can use the funds to support housing projects at 80% AMI or lower if it is ownership, homeownership projects or services. And this was a priority that was identified and advanced by the South Sound Housing Affordability Partnership. The next is tax increment financing. And so I know it's one of the next topics on the agenda this evening. It is a tool that the state authorized a couple of years ago. House Bill 2354 improves the tool by increasing transparency. It also provides an option for arbitration if a sponsoring jurisdiction of a TIF district cannot reach agreement on mitigation with a junior taxing district. This, the, this bill was the outcome of many hours of meetings and conversations and negotiations to find a balance that would both retain the integrity of the tool as well as address concerns from junior taxing districts. I just want to note that AWC, AWC played a very large role in the outcome of this bill. And I would argue that it is likely, or maybe imperative, that there's work done on this topic over the interim to continue the conversation between junior taxing districts and agencies interested in being TIF sponsors to help work through this.
With the new bill, what keeps junior taxing districts from taking a swing and saying, hey, I want to go to mediation because at least I can attempt to get some mitigation?
Well, so current law, and this bill retains that, says that a junior taxing district is only eligible for a mitigation if 20% or more of their assessed value is being impacted by the TIF district. So arbitration isn't eligible unless mitigation is, mitigation has a threshold.
Got it. Okay. Yes.
Lakewood, however, is, probably traveled partway down this road. I mean, we, it's later today, this evening, we're, we're talking about it. So if we were to continue on our path and establish a TIF based on legislation that was passed previously, that is there anything in this legislation that's going, that, that, makes this, these requirements applicable to a TIF that we would create under, under the old bill? Or are we, are, are we likely to establish a TIF and then have, have to, have the rules change on us so that the revenue projections don't hold?
Great question. No. The, you all are on track to hit milestones that are necessary before the effective date of this bill. And once bonds are issued, you, the, the TIF statute says that you can't go in and make changes that would then impact the bond repayments. I'll also say that
I guess the question is whether we do the things or whether there's a difference between the date bonds are issued and the dates that we finalize the TIF process.
We'll probably get more information from Mr. Stowe later on.
Yes. I was just going to say, if I misspoke at all, I am sure Mr. Stowe can correct that. So the next topic that we spent considerable time on, both myself and city staff, was House Bill 2384, which is what intended to and does expand the use for allowable uses of traffic safety cameras. And this was the legis, one of the legislature's primary response to the increasing number of traffic-related fatalities. The bill went through several iterations and for a good chunk of the time would have negatively impacted the city's budget because it wouldn't have allowed you to use your current traffic safety camera revenues the way that you, you do. The final version of the bill, cities are allowed to continue using revenue from current cameras the way that you are. If the city chooses to increase cameras by more than 10%, above 10%, the revenue from those cameras has to be used for traffic safety activities. And there's examples of that in the bill, though it is not specifically defined. Finally, on the topic of military affairs, the South Sound Military and Communities Partnership had four priorities. Two of them were primarily monitoring, since it was the second year of the biennium. And one of the notable outcomes for SSMCP, not necessarily for SSMCP, but for one of their priorities, is another 1.86 million was allocated to Lakewood Water District through the Defense Community Compatibility Account. And this is for PFAS mitigation. The, it's no, it's significant because the DCCA program is something that basically is, was invented and pushed into law by SSMCP. And so to have the legislature allocate more funding to the program in the supplemental year is a really good indication that they see the value of the grant program. And then the final bill that I'll mention is House Bill 1862, again sponsored by Representative Levitt. And this bill provides state BNO tax and sales tax exemption for the American Lake Veterans Golf Course. This has been a request that's taken several years to get across the finish line, but this is a really good example of persistence. And so it will take effect. I think it has delayed effect, so it's not June 6th. There's a date mentioned in the bill. So with all that, what comes next? My advice is always to begin with gratitude. State legislators put their lives on hold for 60 days in a short session, longer in the other years. And I think it's always important to recognize that sacrifice. Several members of the city's delegation will be attending the April 22nd study session, so it's a good opportunity to share appreciation. There, the state is moving more and more towards funneling money through grant programs. And so between now and the end of the year, there's countless grant, state agencies implementing applications for grant programs. The city does an exceptional job of taking advantage of these opportunities. And so I'm only noting it because the opportunities continue to grow. So as much as possible, I'm going to be flagging those opportunities for city staff, but just making you all aware that the state has a lot of money out there, but it takes staff time in order to go and get it. Which is a good segue into the next item. Over the interim, we have lots of things to accomplish, and so we like to put together a list of action items. So I'll be developing that in coordination with city manager. And then we've historically adopted the city's priorities for the next biennium in the fall, but I just encourage you all to start thinking now about priorities that we may want to be considering. The sooner that we kind of have high level ideas or categories of what we may want to be considering, the sooner we can do outreach to our delegation and, and then even beyond our delegation to specific committee chairs. Between now and the next legislative session, we're going to have an election and it's going to be significant for several reasons. Of course, there's going to be three initiatives. Every member of the House and half of the Senate is up for election. The only member of the city's delegation that's not on the November ballot is Senator Conway. And we're going to have a new governor next year. So the 2025 session is going to have a lot of new dynamics to it, but we, we're certain of a few things. We know that they're going to need to adopt new budgets and we know that there's going to be a chance to change laws. So we want to make sure that we're prepared to take advantage of those opportunities.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled up the capital list and in commerce, and there's 82, almost 83 million for behavioral health. A lot of that is now moving more towards substance use disorder, looks like. So my question has to do, my first question is opioid dollars, have they appropriated their opioid settlement dollars and how did they do it if they have?
Good question. I, I don't know if they've appropriated all of the opioid settlement dollars, but I do know that they have done quite a bit. And I, I don't, it's, I don't have all the ways off the top of my head, but I can definitely get that to you.
Okay. So they, so, but it's not going towards capital for the most part? You think it's going
Most of it is towards operating.
It's towards operating. Yeah. If you could get us some information on that because we're still, we're still working through that. Maybe ahead of myself, maybe ahead of events. The construction at a Western State, that's a done deal. It's been bonded, that was in last year's capital budget and is proceeding. But a lot of the plan, the overall plan that Governor Inslee has presented is this idea of building hospitals, state-run, in other locations around the state. There's one that I know of that's actually being built and that's in Vancouver, 32 beds or 48 beds. And they're trying to build one in Snohomish County. Is this, was there any funding in this budget or was there already funding in the, in, in the capital budget that preceded this one to continue that? Or do you see that as an initiative that will die when the governor leaves office?
So to answer the first question.
That he'll stop, that they'll just say, that was his idea. They'll continue with the construction out here, but they'll stop building additional civil commitment and dump them into urban areas?
So yes, the supplemental budget did include funding for another hospital in Taquilla.
Oh, the Heritage.
The Heritage Hospital.
They bought the old one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if the strategy will change. I guess I would say I would be surprised if it does. It seems to not only be, not only like so far down the road of implementation, but also the, the industry best practice as opposed to one, one mega facility or not having support at all. So my impression is that the strategy would, would be retained.
So we've already seen some closures. I mean, the, the site they bought was a closure, right, of a hospital. We had our crisis triage facility out here that the county built really, and there was an operator in there. It's just a few miles from here in unincorporated Pierce County. It's by understanding our police were actually taking people to that facility. I don't know the exact reason why the operator left, but there seems to be concern out there. One, they can't find people and it sounds like they're trying to do something like that. And two, the reimbursement rates are just too low. Did they do anything to address? I guess it would be Medicaid reimbursement rates for behavioral health?
I don't know. I, I know that that was, that that issue was discussed and I, off the top of my head, don't recall the outcome, but I can definitely find out.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Helder? Well, thank you again for your work. Oh, Mr. Bransiter, briefly.
I'll, I'll just ask one more. In your report, you, you, you spoke about a, some money was allocated to the Department of Commerce to look for alternative methods for calculating average, median income. Given that we've given, given a lot of mandates that are, that have AMI tiers of where we're supposed to do that, is the intent of this to look for ways to move people from lower tiers up? Or is it to move people down into ever lower tiers?
My understanding, my understanding of that study is for the legislature to have information to decide if area median income is the best metric to be using to determine affordability or if there is some other measurement out there that would be better.
Okay. Thank you. Well, thanks again for your work this session. I know it was short, I wouldn't say short and sweet, it was short and tedious, but thanks for your work down there. I enjoyed at least the chance to come down and chat with our delegation and at least I got on the list to speak during the Public Safety Caucus or Forum or Subcommittee. Even though we represented, what, 600,000 of the 900,000 residents, we didn't get a chance to speak for 30 seconds, but next time.
Next time.
Next time, we will.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. So the next item for discussion is a significant and lengthy one. Tax Increment Financing Strategy Review with our Economic Development Manager Becky Newton, joined by Bob Stowe and Morgan Shook with Eco Northwest. And while, while they're setting up, why don't we take just a two-minute recess to take a stretch break so we can be fresh for this?
Everybody see that okay? Yeah, if it's away from us, it's a little easier. Yeah, it could be. Right. Well, welcome, Mr. Stowe and Ms. Newton. Thanks for coming tonight. The floor is yours on this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. This is a review of the strategy for the Tax Increment Financing project proposed for Lakewood. And as you mentioned, I'm joined here today by Mr. Bob Stowe with Bob Stowe Development and Strategies. Bob has been working with us diligently on this project. He has also worked on several TIF projects around the state as well. And as you know, TIF is a relatively new tool adopted by the state legislature in 2021 to assist cities, counties, and our ports to fund public infrastructure in targeted areas to encourage private development and investment. And so included in your packet this evening, beginning on page thirty-five, is a draft ordinance for your consideration and possible adoption next week. Also, Attachment B is the project analysis. Attachment C is a summary of the project analysis and clarification and edits after the state review. Attachment D is the state project analysis review. And there is also an attachment that shows our public outreach. So we did do considerable outreach to the library system, Port of Tacoma, West Pierce Fire, Sound Transit. And then we had three separate meetings with Pierce County. They included the Economic and Infrastructure Development Committee for Pierce County Council, as well as a separate meeting with the County Assessor Treasurer, and a third meeting with the Executive and Finance Division. We also have public briefings planned this week on the ninth and the eleventh. Those are via Zoom, and we'll be having a separate in-person meeting prior to the council meeting next week on the fifteenth. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Stowe to go through the presentation with you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Everything I'm going to go over with you this evening is contained within the project analysis, just in a really condensed form. So if you have questions as I go through any part of the presentations, please stop me and ask, and we can talk about any area that's unclear or you need more clarification. But these are the topics I want to review with you, the basic TIF model, overview of tax increment financing, the actual proposed boundary of the tax increment area that will be included in your ordinance, the levy rates, the public improvements, which in this case are related to park improvements, private development that generates the new tax that you're going to be funding the, paying for, for the private improvements, the jobs and the summary, and then next steps. This is, and you've seen this sort of diagram probably for, for many years. It's a basic TIF model. It exists in Washington State as it does in, in nearly every state in the U.S. The difference in Washington State's TIF is that it's somewhat limited to the levies that get applied to the tax increment area. In other words, the state's property tax is exempted from any calculations, as is our exempt levy. So typically, you might have a levy that's ten or eleven dollars. Once you exempt out those other levies, you're probably looking at a levy that's closer to two dollars to four dollars, some, usually something in that range that gets applied to the new construction that occurs within the tax increment area. And so all TIF models have, existing jurisdictions, taxing districts continue to collect this base tax. In other words, the tax that was existing prior in the development value prior to when the tax increment area was formed, and, and Lakewood's case might be on June one of 2024. And then anything above that, new development would go to the city of Lakewood from the other taxing districts. So in summary, tax increment financing is available to three jurisdictions in Washington State. Cities, counties, and ports are the only agencies that can form a tax increment area. Really is a powerful economic development tool, even though it's limited. It's designed for a project-ready or a site, not necessarily you'd want to form a tax increment area and then hope development will occur. And I say that is really important because you're responsible for the debt if you issue debt, regardless of any development occurs within that TA or not. So you want to make sure that development is close behind before you issue any debt associated with the tax increment area, because again, you're responsible for that debt regardless of development happens or not. All tax increment areas or tax increment financing has a foundational sort of element of that the project would not occur but for the infrastructure development or but for the infrastructure public improvements that's being financed. And of course, all of that results in the new assessed value, which drives the new taxes to pay for the infrastructure and creates the public benefits, promotes jobs both one-time and ongoing, and of course, then completes the desired development. And the taxes, only the taxes from the development, you can only collect the taxes from the tax increment area that are necessary in order to support your public improvement. So if you have a tax increment area that's generating more revenue than what you're needing to fund the public improvements, that remaining tax just gets redistributed amongst all the existing taxing districts, as if there were no tax increment area that existed. So key elements associated with the formation of a tax increment area is a one the city-county report has to adopt an ordinance. That ordinance must designate the area that you're claiming as a tax increment area, must identify the public improvements, and then whether or not those public improvements are going to be financed with bonds. There's some limitations, of course. One is that no more than two tax increment areas can be formed at any one time, they cannot overlap, and, and the combination of the two cannot be more than $200 million of assessed valuation at the time that the tax increment ordinance is adopted. And that's in our twenty percent of the total assessed value, but in all the tax increment areas that we've been working on, the governing provision is the, the 200 million. You cannot add, yes, Mayor?
I just want to ask a question. As I recall from the last conversation, any project that is MFT designated is not part of it, or is? I forget.
Would not be part of that for the time of period that the MFT is in place, whether it be eight years, twelve years, or longer.
Got it.
Good question. Cannot, once the ordinance is adopted, you cannot add additional public improvements beyond the description of your ordinance, and you also cannot change the boundary once that has been formed. Must include a deadline as to when construction will occur on the public improvements, and generally, the statute requires that to be within five years after the adoption of the ordinance, unless you can show cause for why delay is necessary. Applies to the local property taxes only. Mentioned this before, but you only receive the TIF revenues that are necessary to support the TIF public improvements or any bond infrastructure debt service costs, which is the additional revenue that's not needed to repay the bonds, or the costs are then allocated back to all the various taxing districts. And in no case can a tax increment area exist longer than a 25-year period. So if you have a 20-year bond and you're, and you pay off that, those infrastructure investments in 20 years, your tax increment area will expire at the end of that, at the end of that period. There are, there are a couple of note, what we're, what's been referred to as no harm provisions within the statute, when the original statute was created a couple of years ago in 2021. These no harm provisions really dictate how a new calculation process for how taxing districts will collect revenues. And there's two key provisions that make up these no harm provisions. Tax increment financing wasn't meant to be a benefit other than to the, the sponsor who is forming it to, to build the infrastructure, but it wasn't meant to benefit any, any special taxing district, and it wasn't meant to harm any special taxing districts. And that was the purpose of these no harm provisions. So the first is the inclusion, there's a lot of verbiage here, I know this was in your packet too, but to distinctly describe it, first was an inclusion of an increment value add-on, which is very similar to a new construction add-on value now that you see in terms of how you calculate property tax. And so you take that, the additional increment value add-on, that's multiplied then by the district's levy, that's meant to replace the revenue that the district's going to be sending over to the TIF sponsor. So they're not of loss of any revenue. It's a new revenue stream that gets created, that then gets distributed to the, the district sponsor for the tax increment area sponsor. Second is the result of that increment add-on value that allows those individual taxing districts to increase their maximum allowable levy the following year if it were not already limited by their constitutional maximum. And so the result of that is a gain in that additional levy capacity, is that those districts will receive approximately the same amount of money that they would have had a tax increment area not been formed and development would have been in place, so they can then use those dollars to help pay for any service demands caused by that development when it, when it's occupied.
But let me, let me ask on that.
Yes.
So if that were to be the case, the taxpayer would then be paying more, though?
The taxpayer, effectively, yes, because it's, you can't create revenue without someone having somewhat of an impact, but it's diluted and spread amongst a, a large area district-wide. And so the impact of that is, is very small in comparison to if you simply had an assessment district and then asked that, that assessment district to pay all of that amount, because it's spread across the district. So in summary, those, those two key provisions provide, one, a new source of revenue from the increment value add-on that supports the TIF infrastructure, and that's directed to the TIF sponsor. And that additional levy capacity to those affected taxing districts help pay for the service demands caused by any TIA development. So just a couple sort of graphics to help sort of describe that a little more. The blue in the left-hand column is, represents the levy amounts. This was, happened to be a sort of a counterfactual that we prepared, Eco Northwest had prepared for an existing fire district in eastern Washington, looking back 10 years as if a tax increment area had had been formed, trying to determine what would the impact be to that taxing district. And the conclusion was, they actually fair a little bit better because of the levy growth capacity, but they didn't lose any money as a result. But you can see those 2008 through the, the year that's final reported there, the blue represents the base value, the green represents the, the new assessed value that's going to the taxing district. The, this chart on the right is meant to reflect, look at, think of it as one year worth of sort of revenue. The, the column on the left is development that would occur, but no tax increment area had been formed, but the development occurred anyway. And so you can see what happens is that you'd get the, the existing construction or the existing value, plus you'd get the construction value, which is in the orange. But on the right, what happens is you get the same amount, so everyone's sort of left at the same revenue-neutral situation. You get the, the existing value plus the construction value, but they also get this increment value add-on. That's the, the bar on the right. That's the part that's getting spread across a much larger area so that the taxing districts aren't harmed. And this is another way to look at the no harm provisions, a little more technical, but it shows sort of the spreadsheet of how you calculate the, the levy amounts and the tax rates and, and how the no harm provisions play out. You see the new construction value, and that's applied at a district level. You also have what's called line D. That's new, that's the increment value add-on. And so you add those things into the levy calculation, it creates this, the new levy for you, the new amount that, that is again intended to replicate what you would have had, had a tax increment area not been formed. And we can come back to that, but I won't spend much more time on that slide. It was really more for some of our CFOs and, and technical folks. This is the actual tax increment area that's being proposed. It largely includes, or it does include your town center. The, the colors represent, an orange or brownish is the new development that's expected to occur within the 25-year period of the tax increment area, and the blue are some tenant improvements that are expected to occur within existing facilities within that same 25-year area. That may be that you have more development or less development. We, we tried our best to predict what might occur as a result of the infrastructure investments for purposes of modeling, but this is the tax increment area that's being proposed. This is the levy that will be applied to the tax increment area. You know, I mentioned the $10 amount that would have applied for 2023 AVs for 2024 taxes. Then you see the, what's exempt there is, is almost $3.80 per 100, for $1,000 assessed value, leading to the new value that's only applied then to the tax increment area, a much smaller amount, for $3.83 per 1,000 of AV. These are simply some inspirational images that we use as, in, in terms of context for the project analysis of how parks can support economic development. There's, you know, certainly sort of a large, I think, body of, of evidence that, that, that showcase and promote that parks are an essential part of downtown redevelopment. Many cities locally, including Bothell, Woodinville, Kenmore, whether it's park facilities or community facilities, Spokane, Vancouver, as well as the cities that are listed here, have all had parks' development as a, as a key element of the revitalization or as their, as part of redevelopment. Of course, we know parks, when they're properly parked, a popular park, restaurants, people, they want to locate around them. They're, they're great in terms of generating interest and generating people, and therefore also good in terms of, of helping support development. And especially even more so when they're combined with, with other public facilities and other public improvements, such as the case that Lakewood is proposing with its, with its Green Street and other infrastructure improvements in combination with the park improvements that you'll be providing. So the park improvements, they include $15 million of, of development. Two million of that is, is associated with acquisition for parkland that has not been identified or negotiated as of yet, and then amenities or the development side of the equation of 13 million. When we modeled the, the revenues within the project analysis, we looked at three different development scenarios. We labeled them aggressive, moderate, and conservative. The aggressive scenario was predicted to generate $522 million of private development or market value within the tax increment area, the moderate 260, and then the conservative 213 million. These are all of the projects associated within the aggressive scenario that totaled that 521 million.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
So to capture a, a project, such as the top one you referenced, does the ordinance have to be in place before the building permit is submitted? Or does it matter? Or, or it just has to come to fruition in terms of construction post the passage of the ordinance?
Neither, because the assessor is responsible for assessing when development and then the value of that development has. A project may be under construction. Certainly, the assessor is probably not going to assign the full value to that, but it will assign some value of that if it's already started and breaking ground.
So it's the timing of the assessment?
Yes.
Got it.
Timing assessment, assessment relative to the construction.
But back to what you said, if we give them the multifamily tax exemption, then there's nothing.
That's correct. And one of the cases, one of the projects includes, that, the top project includes, or at least anticipates, an eight-year tax exemption expected. So for eight years, in terms of our modeling, we pulled out that revenue. So for eight years, in terms of our modeling, we pulled out that revenue, year nine, it, it comes back.
Of the twenty five year timeframe?
Of the twenty five year timeframe, yes.
Mr. Branstad.
Just to run down the different scenarios in that project. If some of the property in the, our tax increment area proposed is not paying property tax because it belongs, it's in, it's in, it's in nonprofit
Right.
ownership or public ownership.
Exempt.
So if ownership of a, one of those properties changes and the assessor then finds that they have a property tax liability, then how does that affect the, the, the tax increment? Is, is that, is that increase in taxable thing considered part of the improved increment that, that, that contributes money to the tax increment area? Or is there a baseline to, to go to do that?
That would, for example, if you have an exempt property that suddenly becomes taxable. Year one is exempt, year two it becomes taxable. You'll get that bump at that time within that tax increment area. Just even if nothing happened development wise, but it still had some value because the land had value.
But that tax assess, tax, tax value adds to the TIF income?
Yes.
Okay, it, it doesn't, it doesn't increase any of the other taxing districts basic?
It does not. The, the model also assumes, as does the law, that even if there's no development within the tax increment area, just the modest amount you might get from inflation or from a property value increase without any development, that all goes into the tax increment area revenue that then gets directed to the city or the sponsor if they have public improvement cost.
Okay, and how does it work in the opposite direction? You have a, a property that's assessed for property taxes now and its ownership changes to where it's in public ownership or it's in nonprofit ownership?
Sure, it just means that likely you're, you're going to have, unless there's some corresponding other development that helped you balance out the fact that you lost a property that was taxable previously, you'll get less revenue the next year, at least from that property. Maybe you'll get less revenue overall. But the revenue that you collect from the TIA, it's, you want it to be supportive of your, your debt service associated with any bonds, but it's not related to it. In other words, once you issue debt because you're pledging your, your general resources, your full faith and credit of, of your city, it's not going to depend upon whether or not there's any, any TIA revenue coming out to, to pay for that debt.
So the fact that our intention is to buy tact, currently taxable property and put it into public ownership is not a big risk factor?
No, I think the property that most likely, I mean, it depends on the property you buy. Of course, if you buy the, 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 the best property out there in terms of the value, it probably have an impact. But I suspect you're going to be looking at buying property that's largely vacant, probably doesn't have a building on it. And so the, the impact of taking that off the tax rolls is going to be very minimal. And probably wouldn't also include property that you anticipate developing on any one of these charts that we're showing. Because remember, we're only showing some of the development parcels within the TIA. There's a lot more of the development parcels. And so I would anticipate the property that you would purchase would be properties other than what we're showing here is going to develop in any of these three scenarios.
Thank you.
This is the same chart. The check marks simply indicate those projects that are moving forward under the moderate scenario. It's the same list that was previous on, on the aggressive scenario. Again, just the check marks indicate those that will move forward. And adding all those up, that's two hundred and sixty million dollars of, of value. And then we simply reduce one of the projects for, for another level of, of two hundred and twelve million. It includes three, three, these three projects plus some of the tenant improvements. So a lot of information on this slide. What it shows you in both the present value, which is a good indicator of how much of the, how much of the public infrastructure cost you, you're capable of supporting. And then the nominal value is sort of the total amount of revenues that you'd collect that'd be able to support principal and interest. So the present value is, 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 is at five percent, trying to replicate what bond costs might be. And then the full amount is the nominal value. So you can see the, the various, I mean, it ranges from, from forty seven million. I'm going to use the nominal values, forty seven million on the aggressive side to thirty four at the moderate. The moderate is what we have pinned as the most likely scenario, at least for purposes of the modeling, which would likely occur. And all the way down to the twenty one, twenty two million under the conservative scenario. So that's the, sort of the, the order of magnitude in terms of the dollars that, that will be available for you to support infrastructure improvements based on those three development programs. Utilizing those same program, development programs, we look at the cash flows and compare that against level debt service. If you issued two million dollars of debt in two thousand and twenty six to purchase the property and then thirteen million in two thousand and twenty nine to build the improvements. You can see under the aggressive scenario, you don't have any years that there's any sort of shortfall, that you have to come up with some additional funds, at least temporarily, to pay the debt service. The moderate scenario, you have five years worth of scenarios. I think this might have been changed, I think we have four now, if we look at the project analysis, if I'm not mistaken. But in any events, there, there are four or five years of sort of minimal payments, the additional amounts that you'll have to come up with to fill the gap between what the TIF revenues will bring in and what your debt service would be on, on a level debt service program. Now, you may also have debt service that is tailored more towards the revenue streams. In other words, you could have interest only the first several years or some different scenario to try to match up the revenue more closely. And then under the conservative scenario, you have a lot of years, seventeen years, that you're going to have to come up with some additional funds in order to, to pay back the debt service. Yes.
So what are the, the aggressive, moderate and conservative approaches? You know, how? How do you assume which projects are going to happen? And, and what is, you know, what does that metrics look like? Or, or what are some things that we can do to make it? You know, like the more aggressive thing happen? I, I don't really understand how the, those correlate and what kind of assumptions I guess are made on, on what's going to happen and when.
Yeah, I mean, certainly you need to have a marketplace that, that is, is conducive towards development. If, you know, recession occurs, you may not have any development and therefore it's going to be difficult for you to sort of steer that. But other things that you can do certainly would be to have a, you know, been business friendly type environment, be able to expedite your building permits so that you can, you know, reduce the timeframe associated with, so people, so developers have less holding costs and they can then move those projects forward. Certainly having good leadership, having good regulatory systems in place so that the codes are easily understood. And anything that you can do is from a regulation standpoint to help development through the process will allow development to occur much faster. But in terms of, as well as making sure that your land use codes are reflective of what the market needs. So there's, you know, a little, some things that the local governments can do, but at, at the end of it, it's really got, it's up to the private sector to develop that land. And, and you want to be able to sort of key it up for them. Make sure the vision, the land use, the regulations, the incentives are there in order to encourage development. And TIF is one of those incentives because without these infrastructure improvements, the developer would be left to finance them or they would, they wouldn't get done and development would likely take longer to develop or would develop in the same, same way.
And, and then would you say that we have, you know, barring like a recession, you know, are, are, would we be more likely to fit into the conservative, the moderate, the aggressive, you know, given how things currently are? Or what, you know, are your understanding of our council and city is, you know?
Yeah, based on my discussion with, with your city staff and, and they've had lots of discussions with private developers or that are all represented on each of those development programs. I think the moderate scenario is, is most likely is what would occur. And the way that you're planning on issuing debt is, is a conservative way in our, in order to sort of mitigate your risk. In other words, by issuing only two million dollars in two thousand and twenty six, that's a small, a small debt service that you'll have to pay and the harm of that is very low if, if for some reason development doesn't happen over a few years. So you have some time to sort of really evaluate the development readiness for these projects and then can adjust your debt that you might issue in accordance with that readiness. So maybe it's ready in two thousand and twenty five. The sooner you issue the debt, the, the sooner you get the improvements built, theoretically the sooner development will occur.
Thanks, so you can do a phased approach, it sounds like.
You can do a phased approach, given, however, there is a stipulation of, of the statute requiring that you develop the public improvements or initiate the public improvements within five years after the adoption of the ordinance unless there's some good cause shown.
I, I, I want to go to the, what I would call the tripwire, or you're saying you need to have the, the improvements going in either right before or during when the private investment is, is being made ideally.
Are, are ready to be made, I mean entitlement should, I, I want to.
So, so that's what I'm, I'm trying to understand. Okay, so we, we do have at least one development in the queue, serious people, they have a plan. But realistically, for a project that we're looking at and the size that we're looking at, it's going to take them time to put all the elements together. I don't, they could be three years out from even construction, four years out to being taxable. Five years out maybe. When, besides the purchase of property, when do we say, okay, we're ready to go? And, and let's, let's make it happen?
You know, I think you'd want to, it's, it's really about sort of risk tolerance and, and what kind of tolerance you have to issue debt against when you believe development will occur. You may want to not issue any debt until you're certain that development's going to happen. In other words, entitlements have been issued, building permits have been issued, development's ready to start. Or maybe it's at an earlier point where you, you know the development's going forward. They've got, they just, they have some things to work out first before they can move that into the final construction cycle or to the, you know, starting construction. So it's going to be different for, for different jurisdictions. And it's, it's going to be based on, again, your risk tolerance and how much debt you're planning on issuing. And then how are you, how do you plan to pay for that debt if the tax increment area doesn't develop? Do you have resources readily available? Are you going to need to go back in and reprioritize, you know, your capital, your capital project so that you can pay the debt service that you, that you've issued? Or in this case, you probably wouldn't issue any, any debt until you, again, had some level of confidence that private development was going to closely follow behind.
So it really takes ongoing, I'm trying to figure this out with, we have a CFP, we have a TIP, you know, we, we have all that capital planning. We just put it in there, keep moving that forward until we feel comfortable as a council. Presumably, I mean, there could be a number of new members, it could be all new members. If you're in a four or five year timeframe, we decide that moment, right? Just, okay, we think we have enough in the queue to make, and it's, and it's far enough, the likelihood is high enough that, of success that the, the, these improvements will actually be made. Rather, to the point of either waiting till it's coming out of the ground or to a year prior to that.
Sure.
Eighteen months prior.
I mean, other jurisdictions have also formed development agreements to try to further define the responsibilities for the developer and for the city. And sometimes that includes when development will occur. So that, again, you have more predictability as to when you then can issue debt. You could also maybe have an agreement with the developer that there, you know, you'll move forward with their development if you have some approval process. If they agree to maybe backfill some of the gap that might be caused if they don't move in a, in a timely fashion with TIP revenue. So, you know, there's different things that you can do. Make, you could also reduce your, your total debt to the extent that you're able to gain some grants during this, you know, two or three or four year period there, waiting for development to, to catch up and move forward. Maybe your fifteen million becomes ten million because you have five million dollars that you've applied from other sources.
Okay.
Great. Because the, your debt service, your bonds are not going to care where the revenue comes from.
Thank you.
Uh, just a quick question. The scenario planning under moderate and conservative through here, it looks like a majority of the market value that you're considering is from one specific developer, developer. Is there an increased risk to putting all our eggs in one basket, so to speak?
So the biggest development under the moderate is the Alliance Residential. But you also have, you know, Kite Mixed Use Project, and then the other ones are smaller.
Yeah, I was looking at the Kite Mixed Use Projects and then the Kite Liquid Town Center project up above, but I know it's in the aggressive one.
I mean, if those don't.
Kind of in the same spot.
Yeah, if those stall and nothing else replaces them, you know, that would, that would cause you to, you know, consider how much debt you wanted to issue and then what your tolerance is for issuing that debt with, you know, hoping and expecting more development to come later.
While we're looking at that slide, back to the.
This one?
Yeah, maybe this is not a fair question to Becky right now, but the Kite Mixed Juice Project, that's kind of the first one I've heard of that specifically. Is that one arguably something that's conservative or moderate a go?
So in the, yes, in the conversations with Kite and the town center, there is some additional mixed use being talked about, yes.
Mr. Branstad.
So looking at this slide and on the, you know, the, the largest project that's moving forward now that's there is the Alliance Project. And as the slide indicates, it's expected that they will apply and likely get an eight year multifamily tax exemption. So when I go to your slide that showed the three things with the, our revenue was expected, how did that increase suddenly kicking in eight years from now or ten years now? I didn't see where that uh, was reflected in anticipated TIF revenue. It looked like it was anticipated earlier, but if we grant the tax exemption, it won't be there.
Um, it, it was taken into account. I didn't do those calculations, but my colleague prepared those calculations at Eco Northwest. And, and although it may not show it as, you know, the ninth year goes up, it was taking as, as an average across all the twenty five years. So it was reflected into the cash flow model, the eight years.
Okay, just, just, it, it, just the way that it was portrayed, couldn't see that.
Right.
Where there would be a significant change at.
Year nine, right?
And actually, oh yeah, year ten, that's, it's going to take a while for all this to happen.
Because the first several years, when they're under development, it's going to, I mean, it's going to be incremental in terms of, it won't get to that hundred and twenty six million in one or two years. It'd probably take two years, I think, for that project to be fully assessed that as, as full market value.
Yeah, I just didn't see where there was a jump of a hundred and twenty six somewhere when the tax exemption ran out.
Okay, thank you. So part of the project analysis required by the statute is identification of the number of construction jobs and then ongoing jobs. And so those are estimated between eight hundred and thirty, this uses the, the term baseline, but that's really the aggressive scenario. Moderate and conservative, alternative one, alternative two. And then the ongoing jobs between. And then the ongoing jobs um between uh fifty and two hundred and twenty. And these are just jobs that would exist inside the tax increment area that not those that any rippling effect that having more jobs and more um people living within the the TIA would impact outside the TIA area. So this is the summary slide, um fifteen million dollars of public improvements. These are using present value, so up to twenty three point four million um of of TIP uh property tax revenue, full build out um could be expected. Private development build out fifteen hundred units, two hundred and thirty thousand square feet of retail development, a hundred thousand square feet of tenant improvements. Uh, two hundred and sixty million of market value increase within the moderate. We didn't cover this in this this presentation, but it also includes some additional tax revenue that you will generate um as a result from the development. Most of it, ninety percent of it is from sales tax on on construction. And then you have some ongoing construction too, but that was nearly ten million dollars too um that you'll receive over that twenty five year period. Uh, thirteen hundred and ten construction jobs and a hundred and ten ongoing um jobs and ongoing scenario. So our process has been, uh, we submitted the project analysis to the state in late in December. The state, which you have a copy of in your packet, let's say it's Exhibit D, um, the state's uh letter, um, which they have indicated their opinion that that meets the objectives effectively of the of the statute. Um, you've met that requirement. Um, we've been conducting the early outreach. Um, as as mentioned earlier, we have a couple project analysis or project briefings um this week and then a third um just prior to the meeting of council. And then your consideration of the ordinance next week. Uh, following that, of course, you may issue some development agreements um with developers as you move forward with with various developments. Um, you'll you'll want to really evaluate the development readiness and the market before issuing debt. Um, and issuing debt, of course, we've labeled at least for the model at two million and twenty six and thirteen and twenty nine, you know, that could change. And then, of course, just monitoring the development activity um to assure that um you you're collecting revenues um enabled then to pay yourself back for any any revenues that get that created in future years um to uh during years that development was starting and not generating as much revenue as you might need for for the debt service. So that completes sort of my presentation. Be glad to answer any questions that the council might have at this time.
Questions? I mean, the the uh ever-present question is the risk analysis in the state. Just got sat on page ninety four as well. The potential risks worth are worthy of consideration. No. It it really comes down to being somewhat conservative and maybe moderate on the development. I I am all for it because I think that if you build it, things will come. That's kind of been our experience. But I'm also a little bit, I don't want to say stunned, but a little bit um informed by our past where we had the subarea planning process for the central business district and we're hopeful to get a mixed use project by now and um, we've yet to see a really significant one. So hopeful that next three to five years, things will change for the better, but it's been challenging uh in the downtown to see significant development improvement over the QFC over. But we do now have the back, I call it the back forty, the uh Alliance Project coming to fruition, and that's a very positive sign. So that's perhaps this trend in the right direction. Got a crystal ball? Yeah. Mr. So.
If I understand correctly, we can limit our risk by waiting on when we issue the debt until we're confident in these projects coming up.
Yeah, as the phases kind of go forward of development, as Mr. Stowe indicated, right? Exactly. That that gives me a warm and comfy.
Yeah, me too. Yeah.
Is that a legal term?
Yeah.
Warm comfy.
You're the attorney.
Yeah, right. Warm, comfy, yeah.
Right. All you're you're being asked, as I understand, next week is simply to accrue the tax increment area ordinance? And that simply forms the area, doesn't issue the debt. Those are separate.
Absolutely. But in terms of timing, as I understand, it's pretty critical. We do that this month.
Yes, so you you'll want to adopt, if you want the tax increment area to be effective this June.
Right.
You'll need to adopt it um before the end of May.
Okay.
And maybe but if you may, you may have some other code issues that require your ordinance effectiveness so many days prior to effectiveness, which may also.
Yeah, it's a thirty day effective timeframe, I believe. So we got to back that up.
Yeah.
So it's really before the end of April that we need to adopt the ordinance. But the and the five year clock starts once we pass it or once it becomes effective.
Yes.
So, okay.
Which is a good thing, frankly.
Right, yeah. It can't hang forever.
Right.
We got to, we got to proceed post haste, as they say. Post haste. Any other questions, thoughts or comments, folks, on that?
You did have a question from the earlier uh presentation regarding whether or not the current, the the new legislation that went into effect would have any bearing upon the actions that you would take this year. And I agree with the previous uh comment that I don't believe that it would. Um, all of the legislative changes that occurred this last session, most of them dealt with processes and issues um prior to the adoption of a tax increment area. Um, very little occurred for what happens after the tax increment area is adopted. So it would be difficult, I think, to try to parse out certain things apply to from that ordinance or to that legislation to 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 your current situation. Um, also, you're only at um the arbit- the the requirement to form mitigation agreements with Fire District, which is the only jurisdiction that's allowed within current law. The the revised law included EMS and some other junior taxing districts. You had to have at least twenty percent of the assessed valuation impacted. You're only at one percent of of an impact to your to your West Pierce Fire District. The other requirement that exists in current law is that you're either at that twenty percent throws you into mitigation or that taxing district or that, in this case, the Fire District, if they claim that there is a service um impact um as part of their capital facilities planned um or or annual report, um that could also throw you into a mitigation scenario. Um, this year's legislation simply added an additional provision which said you're going to arbitration if you can't resolve that through mediation and added a few other agencies in which that applies to.
Well, the other thing that I have a, again, a warm comfy on is our ability to do a good job of obtaining grant monies if and where available. So I'm pretty comfortable that we'll get some portion of this covered by grants from our state or federal or both delegations. Okay, well, thanks again for the the overview. This is coming before council next meeting, as I understand it, for further discussion as need be and to uh pass the ordinance. I would ask council members, if you have questions or word tweaks or certain comments that you'd like to bring forth for discussion, please send them to the city manager so that he can circulate to all of us so we can be educated about concerns or issues before next Monday because we are on a tight timeframe on this. So I would encourage you to do that. Mr. Branstad.
Yeah, also, Mr. Mayor, I I would like, since there's going to be two public briefings, I guess that's what they're called, that are going to occur this week. Uh, if we could get a summary of what with the themes and what we hear at those briefings, perhaps along with our uh agenda packet for next week so that we know we we have those to digest as well as the comments we're going to hear immediately prior to taking up the ordinance.
Absolutely. As I understand, the briefings, it's it's more of a communication to those participants who want to learn about it as opposed to receiving public testimony or comments, but certainly you'll receive comments, I assume, in in the dialogue.
I'm anticipating we'll have similar presentation of what which you receive this evening and then um accept address questions if there are any and then accept any testimony that they want to pass along to you.
Or comments, anyway. Yeah, yeah, it'll be comments. To hear, uh, I don't say hearings, they're briefings, right? Okay. All right, very good. Well, thank you again. Appreciate it. Good work on this.
Thanks.
It's exciting. Okay, next, we're going to have Ms. Dodsworth and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, folks, to the extent Ms. Dodsworth needs some assistance, present an overview on the Edgewater Park Master Plan Update. Absolutely, that'd be great. Yeah, let's do it. Why don't we go ahead and take a couple minute break while they get the table together and we'll do a quick recess here so they can get themselves ready. Okay, we are back with the Edgewater Plan Master, Edgewater Park, excuse me, Master Plan Update. Ms. Dodsworth.
My on now. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council Members. As you know, I'm Mary Dodsworth. I'm your Parks, Recreation and Community Services Director, and I wanted to introduce you to David De- or David De La Cruz. He's our newest member. He's been here, I think, this is his sixth day. We're glad he keeps coming back. But he'll be working with our capital projects and there's lots to do, so we're grateful for the support. Yeah, so. Yeah, parks, yeah.
Exclusively for parks.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we got, we got lots happening, so. But anyway, what I what I was going to do specifically, um, just a little bit of a history about the project and where we're at today, talk about the process and um and then we'll talk about the preferred master plan that the park board has recommended to move forward for your review and consideration. So just as a little bit of a history, um, Edgewater Park, it's located on Lake Stillicum. It's the only public open space um and boat launch onto Lake Stillicum. And basically, the park area has remained really undeveloped, except for we did do a boat launch update in two thousand and six. As you know, we kind of inherited a lot of distressed properties when we incorporated from Pierce County. So it was one of the first sites that we improved not long after incorporation. And then we've kind of spent twenty years going throughout the community, small projects, big projects, to make improvements and redevelopment. And um in two thousand eighteen, it was Edgewater's turn for us to start on that as doing kind of some more major renovations to that site. So we began working on the ma- on a master plan back in two thousand eight or twenty eighteen, and the park board hosted several community engagement meetings. They had in uh meetings out on site. They had meetings here at City Hall. And in two thousand and nineteen, we came up with a draft master plan that was um addressing the issues and concerns that we heard from neighbors and park users. And we were working that uh through the council process when we had this little thing called COVID. So um, so that kind of took a little bit of a break in the community meetings and processes. But because at the time we were con- um considering roadway improvements, we decided during that period of time when we were uh not having community meetings and events is that we did use some of that time to start doing some survey work and to do some other site issue work. Now, normally when we do a master plan, you know, we don't really do um we don't usually do surveys and studies and things like that because a master plan is just a conceptual plan. And and as a reminder, it isn't a construction drawing. It's a site plan that talks about how we solve problems, meet community need, fill gaps in the city system, um or just address different issues and concerns. And so um sometime, you know, you create a master plan and it's really important because you really want to know where you're at today and where you're going to go tomorrow. Sometimes it takes years and years, you know, you talked about your plan here. It can take ten, twenty years to get a plan completed. Um, and we've seen that at Harry Todd. We've seen that at American Lake. There's bits and pieces and it takes a long time to do that, but it's important to have a plan. You have your legacy plan. But it's important to have a plan A so that you know where to go, you know what you need to do or want to do. But also throughout periods of time, there's lots of great ideas that come up. And you want to make sure that that idea, and sometimes it's a great opportunity, how does it fit within the plan? Is it completely has nothing to do with your plan and then you really have to reconfigure what you're doing or, oh, it's a great little piece to this puzzle? Um, so uh, for instance, you might get an Eagle Scout group that comes in and they want to do this improvement. It's the perfect spot for something. Um, or you might get a community group that wants to come in and do something different and it really doesn't fit within your plan. So then you just, it gives you opportunities again for conversation. But anyway, so um so that's why uh in twenty twenty three, you directed the park board to to get back on this project and to take a look. You put it in their in your work program to take a look at the previous plan and talk about potential future development. And also, we wanted to be prepared for the twenty twenty four grant season because that's coming up. And we know how long it takes and how complicated it can be to permit anything along the shoreline. So we worked with a consultant team and we researched a lot of site issues so that we would know how to address them if and when we got ready to move forward. So uh, short story long, after three community meetings and looking at several different options and solutions to lots of problems, a preferred plan was. to lots of problems, a preferred plan was recommended or was reviewed and recommended to forward to you tonight for consideration. So, that's kind of the, the process from 2018 till today. So, throughout all of this period of time, over five years, we've been gathering lots of different information, but really, the issues and concerns have remained primarily the same. So we've heard from the neighbors, we've heard from park users, and all master plan processes start with issues and concerns. Everybody comes in fearful, they're fearful of change, they're fearful of impact, and so you always get a lot of issues and concerns about what's happening or problems in the area. And it, the, the issues and concerns really haven't changed for Edgewater Park. So the main things that we heard were a lack of parking, illegal parking, during hot, hot summer days, cars are everywhere, they're blocking driveways and, and concern regarding emergency access. We did some traffic studies, and that's, and we concur with that, that's what we saw. We saw during Labor Day weekend, it was a beautiful weekend, holiday weekend, and then we came back and did another assessment with traffic cameras and such when we were considering options, and we saw that again. Parking is a problem, there's no parking, people are parking all over the place, blocking driveways, but also really narrowing the road to one way, where it's really hard to navigate between two ways. We saw, we heard a lot about no enforcement. They were concerned regarding illegal activities, potential illegal activities happening in the park and on the lake, that we could use some additional enforcement or things to reduce illegal activities happening in the park. Speeding, speeding in the neighborhood, taking shortcuts along Edgewater Drive, because it is kind of a funky way to get, you know, if you go on there, you can't get up into the left on Silicon Boulevard, you have to sort of zoom around, so people were, are, are speeding through the neighborhood and taking shortcuts to Silicon Boulevard. A real concern regarding no sidewalks, no pathways. People are just walking down the street when they're out walking their dog or walking the neighborhood area, but also that there isn't, there's not really good access to get down to the shoreline. A lack of maintenance, concern that invasive plants and blackberries are blocking views. The, the boat launch was a big factor, more of a factor this year than it was a few years ago, but every year, the boat launch is very steep, we know that, we knew that that's, it's a single launch, very steep. The water's really shallow there when the water's level drops, which happens in the summer, that there's no parking for trailers. There's in-water stumps that are dangerous, people are power loading when they launch and launch, so it digs out a big hole and puts a big pile of dirt behind the launch, so again, making it more and more difficult to get in and out of the launch. And there's no mortgage dock, so people talked about launching their boats and having to tie the boat to a tree, or have someone stand out in the water holding the boat so that they can go try and find a place to park their car. So there needed to be some sort of temporary mortgage so that you could leave your boat after you launched and, and deal with your vehicle that was blocking the road. Because again, when you know the, you're, you're coming to a three-way stop and you're having to launch the boat up a road and coming back down, so there is traffic issues there as well. A lot of issues regarding safety in the water, conflicts with where people are launching their boat, where kids are swimming, where people are trying to fish, that people are all on top of each other, so that there's a lot of safety conflicts in the water. Those three things don't always work well together. A lot of concern regarding what, if we make improvements, that it's going to increase park use and increase people in the neighborhood, and there's concerns regarding the impact to the site and to the lake and to the neighborhoods. And that there is, you know, there's no ADA access, there's no bathrooms, there's no places to fish, there's no site furnishings, that it really isn't a park, except for we call it a park. So, so that, those are the issues and concerns, and they were repeated over and over and over and over again throughout the process. So what we did was come up with solutions for some of those problems, and so in your packet, you had three different options. I'm not going to go into all the options tonight, just to show you again. Master plan level, just a lot of concepts that we created to deal with some of these issues, like what would it look like if there were sidewalks on the north side of the road or the east side of the road? What would it look like if the sidewalks were along the road or if they were in the park? How would that impact trees? So again, we did several different scenarios to take a look at how we might make improvements to solve the problems, but then what are the impacts to the site? What are the impacts to the trees? What are the impacts to the roadways? One of the things that we did find out is, is that, you know, we have a 60-foot right-of-way in there, and it's really big, and the road is only like 12 feet wide. So there's a lot of encroachment occurring, so of course, then people are concerned about how that's going to impact their front, their front lawn, or their trees, or their driveways. There is really only one house along that whole area that we're really talking about tonight that accesses their house from Edgewater Drive. Everybody else accesses it from an alley in the back. But that one driveway was of concern, so we, of course, took note of that in all of our scenarios that we picked, so. In some of the scenarios, we had up to 39 parking spots, because we heard parking was such a big deal. In some of those scenarios, there could have been between eight and 12 trees that were removed just to deal with sidewalks and parking. But I think when you see the preferred plan that the park board has brought forward for you, you're going to see that it's a very passive park. You're going to see that impacts to trees was minimized as much as possible, and you're, I think that you'll find that we have created concepts that are solutions to lots of the different problems that we heard from the neighborhood. So, are there any questions so far? And if not, we can jump right to the plan and just kind of go over the different ideas, and those are basically solutions. Yes, sir.
Mr. Brandon Center.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to thank Ms. Dodsworth and the Parks Board for bringing this here to us and the up, and the update on process that got here, but I guess say that my perception of the process is a much longer timeframe. It goes back to, and Ms. Dodsworth's initial comments, that we've sort of reached the point of where this is Edgewater Park's time, because we have made improvements to parks throughout the city, but we've done them in some respect in order of the capacity of numbers of residents that they can serve, and Edgewater Park has a role to play in providing access to the water that has been a recurring theme for decades of people in, in the city. But it's, we focus first on the, the parks on American Lake and, 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 and the others, and we're getting to that, and we've, and we've explored the possibilities of street ends, and we'll, we'll maybe look at that. But that the consistently, going back to the advent of the first legacy plan, there was always a role for Edgewater Park as a water access amenity for the community to be able to go, go forward and do this. So this is not something that just sprang to life three years ago as an idea. It was always something that was an idea of the community, and so Legacy Plan was not just dreamed up by the, the council and the Parks Board, but there was a quite a bit of a community input into that of looking at things going on, okay? I mean, I, I don't know if we're ever going to get to the water access for Blueberry Park, but.
Well, there's water there, for sure.
Do that, but, and, 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 and let me, let me just say that the the process that involved the community meetings, that the Parks Board and, and, and the park staff did a, a, a good job of listening. Because I, I, I went to all of them, and this here incorporates many ideas that were expressed, and you had to listen closely at those meetings to capture the people that were providing meaningful ideas as opposed to venting. But, you know, but I think we've been well-served to this point by the park staff and the parks board in, in terms of what they're, what they're bringing to us, and it is in many ways, it represents what they heard from people in the community.
I just had a question about process. In the 2018 master planning process, and perhaps earlier, did the board at that time have the occasion to noodle over the concept without the existing house like this plan represents, or was that even part of the consideration back then?
At the time when we created this plan, we weren't really considering that house property, because we didn't, we were really focusing on the property that we had at that time, talking about the boat launch, fixing the boat launch as where it was, but because we were talking about solving some of the transportation issues is when we started doing the survey, which I have it here for you if you want to take a look at it, and that's when we had those aha moments, that there's some problems, there's encroachment, not just on that property, but there's a lot of encroachment along the road as well, which every time I think your Public Works Department does a road project, you know, they start finding year-old encroachment that's occurred, and, and it has to be addressed when they do those road improvements, when they're doing curb gutter and sidewalks, so. So, we worked with Public Works throughout this process, because when it comes to transportation, they're the experts, and they would have to approve and agree with whatever we were proposing. So the, the great thing is that they partnered throughout this whole process with us and provided great feedback and reality checks as well, because encroachments aren't new to them. It's that, you know, we don't have that as often when we're doing park projects, because usually you're, you're within a kind of a defined area, but because this is more of a linear, linear park, we ran into a lot more of those issues, so. So if everybody wanted to do their stretch, we could get up, and I'm going to take the microphone for, but I, I just think that it's.
Did you want to ask your question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Laura Zell had a quick question.
Yeah, it's just a quick question. The water level of Silicon Lake, how much does it fluctuate in the summertime?
Oh, boy.
Um, I don't have that information with me, but I can share, it drops quite a bit. All of our lakes do, because a lot of them are stormwater or water and underground streams, but it, it drops quite a bit.
I would say it was at least 18 to 24 inches this year.
Oh, yeah.
And our plan accounts for that, so that
Yes.
all of these things would still be usable at a low water situation.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. In fact, some of them were put in certain locations because of the lower water. Okay, so if you wanted to step up, I am happy to speak upside down. Hopefully, lean towards the microphone. Can you hear that still? Brianna, okay? So, okay, so this is a preferred, the preferred plan, again, it was consolidation of many options, three official alternatives, and, and here's kind of how we came up with solutions to those issues that we talked about. So, to start off with roadway, we looked at, and just from orientation, normally I'm north, but today Patty's north, so we're going now, or Councilmember Belle, sorry about that. Yeah, she's true north, so north is going this way, which makes east and west and south that way, so it's just a little bit different because of the orientation. But anyway, we took a look at, you know, one way's this way, one way's that way. We took a look at opening the road up to more of a pedestrian and traffic mode. We looked at one way going this way, keeping this two-way, we looked at two-way this way. So we really considered several different traffic options, and what we've come up with is this one-way this way. The neighbors were very concerned about having their, their, if we did it going this way, you'd have people parking on this side, and so you'd put, be putting mailboxes and garbage cans and things on the other side, even though I think the majority of them have them out here. This is your alley. But, so anyway, so going one way this way is a real traffic calming, so this is still two-way on Sacramento, but it would be having, and most people are coming in and out again of their driveways here, right? So it would be for the people driving in and around. So one way's going this way, and then when you get here, one way eventually is going this way, and again, it slows that traffic down from people racing through the neighborhood. And we did even talk about, well, what would it be if we kept this one way, but there's, it would impact so much out here, so it really is the transportation directions that were created by the Public Works Engineers and Traffic Studies, and, and that's just being proposed for that. So, also, we've added some crosswalks and some speed bumps, again, that traffic calming to slow people down, so it is a very narrow road, and you are near a park, so it is getting people to move a little bit slower in this important area, because there's often pedestrians and things like that happening. So then we have parking. So again, parking was a big deal, parking was a big deal, so we started off with a lot more parking, but recognized the more parking you add, with our street requirements, curb gutter and sidewalk and things like that, we started impacting a lot of trees, and we understand that trees are important. You're a park setting, canopy's important, and although here's your right-of-way, folks, look at the dotted line. This is your right-of-way. It's quite large. You can see all of these trees that are involved, and although the city could come in and just take all that right-of-way and do what they need to do, but one of the things we sort of approached is just because you can doesn't mean you have to. Use what you need and make it work, and so we've got 19 parking spots, which include parking up here, some parallel parking along here, and it does include new parking spots there. Yes. Yeah, of course.
So, my question is the consideration of the tie-in to the road project we'll be doing in 2026 on Mount Tacoma, so if we have Waverly going up here, it intersects right with Mount Tacoma, are there going to be any pedestrian, at least a small walking path, linking with that new sidewalk project we're going to have in 2026 down Waverly, so that pedestrians can safely access the lake? Because you got right-of-way, and you don't have to have a linear sidewalk, you can have a meandering path around the trees.
Sure. I can ask Public Works to give us some feedback on that. They're designing that, but we didn't get that far, so.
But it's a tie-in that makes complete sense, because then it brings pedestrians potentially all the way from the Colonial Plaza, all the way down Ardmore 93rd, all the way down Mount Tacoma Drive, to the only access to the water in this location. From here, it's, to connect with Mount Tacoma to here, it's maybe a block and a half.
Oh.
Maybe two.
So if they have a master plan, we'll bring that in, we'll add that to the next round, so we can take, take a look at that, and it probably was discussed during all of these different options, but.
It's important to keep in mind.
Yeah, again, from the connection, and, and I think it's, you know, when the city incorporated, there were no sidewalks here, right? We started doing all these little sidewalk projects in tune with our projects, and now you're seeing everything's connecting.
Yeah.
And it has taken 25 years, 26 years, but it's working, and, and sometimes that's what it takes to get there, so.
Your example on, in for Silicon Park on Elwood Drive, the beautiful asphalt path with lighting is a perfect example of what could work here.
Yeah, exactly.
So how many parking spots in total on the road?
19. 12 standard, yeah, so 12, and that's coming up, and that's moving some of that up here, and.
And that should be fine, because there aren't any now. There aren't any now, so.
Right, correct, yeah, there's really no parking at all.
There was a lot of concerns on the.
Unfortunately, there's like 30.
So, there, there was a lot of concern about parking on the streets during the public hearings, and and one of my questions is how, you know, how do we keep the parking for parkgoers rather than overflow for the houses and people that are there and, and people coming in at nighttime and stuff that are just sitting there parking when they shouldn't be parking, and you know, it's not like it's a parking lot like on Gravely Lake that, you know, it can be chained off and stuff, it's like linear parking along the street, so.
So that would be a programmatic thing, signage, enforcement, you know, as I said, most of the folks are accessing and probably maybe their guests, because they're not able to really access their houses from there, so most of those are accessing and parking in, from the alley. So from the housing, how, you know, from the residents there. There is one, again, individual who, their driveway's right through there, and it goes to their garage, so you know, we even talked about would it make, if you could close this road off, actually, just have it be for pedestrians, right? It's not even, it's just a pedestrian, or that was another consideration. But you would, it's very, very steep, I mean, could we build a road to this garage so that this person had the same access for everybody else? But it's quite steep, and it would be a challenge, so, but we did consider, again, those things because of, and then that would, that would change that, you could put a lot more parking there, because it would be just for pedestrian use, so. I mean, you could do that mix, so. But that, that would be signage. And you're in the right-of-way, we don't really control, we don't do hourly, you can only do that for three hours or five hours. But it's something to consider when we're looking at the programmatic side of that, so. Thanks for adding that.
That we're talking, this is really getting to the details.
Yeah.
For these spots here. People are going to be theoretically mostly coming in from this way, right? Because even though it's a two-way, there's not going to be traffic coming from here. These spots are on the lakeside. Because even though it's a two-way, there's not going to be traffic coming from here. These spots are on the lakeside. If, or is the expectation people are going to do a U-turn to park here or are they going to face the opposite direction?
Um, I think you would come in and you'd park this way, parallel going this way, cause then this is your out, or this is your out.
Okay, so when you exit, you'd be going into oncoming traffic as we go across.
Really, it's not really parking, it's loading, unloading.
For, if this is, if we phase it and this isn't built, then this would be your tie-down, as you said. Some ADA parking and a tie-down to get ready to do this, cause this is your launch right here. Um, but this is the fully developed plan. So, so yeah, so if, right, so if this occurs. Then this becomes parking and we'll probably do an ADA parking here too, just because you'll see in the phasing. But then that would be, this would be your tie-down. So you don't have to block the road and take parking for that. Because you have a space off-road to deal with that. The tie-down is really when you're um, lo- launching your boat, you unhook everything. And then when you pull your boat out, you hook it back up before you drive off. So you do need a spot to do that.
I didn't once and the thing flipped over in the street, but that's another story.
That's why we have it.
So this is long-term parking for people in this area or is it?
It, well, well, we don't have an hourly thing, but and that's again, an enforcement issue, but you could sign at that. Um, but um, but the idea is, is that if it's all developed, that would all be parking. If it's, if this isn't developed, this would be your tie-down area. Wouldn't be additional, just parking for the area. Um, okay, and with this, we really, you can see this is, for this is one tree here. And this is kind of a scrappy little thing on the beach, so, but it's still considered a tree. So, which I know trees are important, but there was a time when, you know, again, if you look in this right-of-way and you wanted, that's why the parking is up here. And not all the way up here, cause we would be affecting this whole tree canopy. Uh, we really tried to avoid that. So you can see all these circles that are not red are trees that are large tree canopies that we're retaining. So that was important. Um, so pedestrian safety, pedestrian safety, of course, is quite important. And so you can see these are sidewalks coming from the neighborhood to be able, and if you're parking parallel, to get you to the park. Crosswalk there to get you safely on a sidewalk. This was um, basically trails within the park, so that we weren't calling them sidewalks. Um, cause if they're sidewalks for a transportation project, they really wouldn't be grant eligible. So that's also what we're looking for. So here are a hard surface trail. It could be a compacted hard surface like a gravel. It could be asphalt. It could be concrete, really haven't to come, got to that place yet, but a hard surface, so it's ADA accessible. Just to get you from one end from here to there, so to speak. And then to the water in strategic areas. So just to note, these limey green areas that are dotted are wetlands. And so again, we want to get rid of the invasives, plant, natural plants. It's good for habitat. It's good for the birds. It's good for the animals. Um, it's good for the earth. So um, part of what you see are pocket beaches. To bring people to specific areas to avoid stomping on the protected area that we have to protect.
Yeah, Mary, we won't have any park. Like so many of the houses have parks with infrastructure bulkheads.
No. No, it's, there could be a little bit like a a wall here. You are seeing some retaining walls just because of the s- the slopes. Well, just throughout it, there are, it is quite sloped. And so, yeah, no bulkheads, um, just some like retainage to hold the. Infrastructure together. Yeah, but no bulkheads, no. So that's parking. Um, pedestrian safety, we talked a little bit about that. And again, these uh, speed bumps and crosswalks help slow people down. So again, when you're mixing, and it it's a very narrow road, right? If you're down there, it's quite narrow. So you're, you're looking at wanting to slow people down so that it's a safer place for people to play. And then the boat launch was a big thing. So currently the boat launch is right here. So we did move it to this side and provide parking and a one-way access in. So you're parking one way out, one way in, parking your vehicle. A lot of folks that live on the lake are using the launch and then they drive to their house and someone else picks them up. So they're not really parking here all the time. This is really more for folks that don't live on the lake. So uh, those folks that live on the lake have probably a place to park their vehicle and trailer at their house. And um, so, so that's for um, for the boat launch. And again, this added parking, which there's no truck and trailer. And when you look at the traffic study. Um, there's all kinds of pictures, cause we had cameras all over the place. People are wrapping trailers around corners and blocking driveways. And it's really a challenge for the neighborhood. Um, so um, this is also right here, a little temporary mortgage dock. Which is um, always been sort of the plan by either fixing the launch here or doing that. So um, so that's for, for that. So then we talked about the separation of water activities because of um, everybody's doing it on top of each other right now. Here is the boat launch and kids are all swimming there and people are fishing. So we define this as the swim area using some of these stumps as a way to secure the line. This is just a dotted line, you know, a rope with a buoy. This is a fishing pier and kind of a fishing dock, so to speak. So you can see it goes out there. Lots of fishermen down there, fisher people. Um, they're kayaking, um, but they're standing on the shore, but there's a lot of fishing that happens down there that we've observed. And so that's kind of an important activity. So you got your boat launch, your swimming and your fishing to sort of divide and conquer. And also for wildlife viewing, a lot of people, we know, go to our parks and just like to look at the birds and look at the wildlife. And it's nice to be able to get out over the water there.
You tend to confuse it be sort of smooth, either grassy or some areas will be able to sit or?
Yeah, yeah, this would be turf. The grass would be, that would be turf. This would be native plants. Um, but yeah, the green would be a turf-type surface, which means you need irrigation, which means you need, you know, you can't just throw grass seed out there. It would be to make it nice. Um, and then the other thing is, is that we found when we did the traffic study. That thirty percent, thirty-three percent of everybody using the boat launch was a hand carry. It was a kayak, it was a paddleboard, it wasn't a boat. So at least this is over this holiday weekend, but it's been pretty consistent, we've found. So the idea is to create a hand carry, an area either you can get in here, you could drop in there. But um, for grant purposes, that's hand carry. So, so people can park their car and unload it. You know, you don't have as much truck and trailer as you do with a kayak or a paddleboard. Or canoe. Um, so that's for wild, uh, water safety, again, dividing those activities. Engine boats, hand carry, swimming, fishing. And this dock is already there, so the idea would just be to use that for wa- over the water. But really not encourage fishing there, because again, there's lots of stumps and this is going to be your active get in and out of the water. So. Um, park amenities, oh, so environmental protection, again, creating these specific pocket pe- beaches. So that you are taking people away from the wetlands, but also giving them a place to go, so you're not overwhelming any one spot. So that you're kind of dividing and conquering across the area uh, to utilize the shoreline, uh, less impact to the wetlands. And again, getting rid of the invasive plants, adding native plants, landscaping in irrigation for sustainability of that area. For park amenities, we're just looking at really simple park amenities. This is a, like, just a teeny little shelter, not probably much bigger than a pop-up tent. Cause it's not a big area, so you don't want, you know, hundreds of people coming. It's probably like for two picnic tables and maybe ten people. You've got, excuse me, these are benches. We have a couple swing benches, which are sort of fun. They're just a bench, but they swing. It's kind of fun sitting by the water when you're out taking a walk. Um, we have um, trash cans, of course. A restroom. So here's, restrooms were kind of a big deal. So for, I think this is number four, yeah. So here's a pad for a Santa can, depending on the phasing, on how we develop it. If this is the boat launch tomorrow, it's like we need a Santa can there, the neighbors. If you don't have a Santa can, then they're using the park or these bushes in the neighborhood. Um, normally we would not put a s- a restroom in a neighborhood park kind of thing, but with a boat launch and the only access. It's really be, it's more than that. It's really more of a, a community park. So the other idea is this is a Portland Lou, and as you remember, we're doing that at Wordslake. We're sort of test-driving it there. And so we're hoping that we have success with that and that could be the solution to some of the problems that we have with restrooms and parks. Less um, to maintain. We're right next to a sewer pump lift station, so that could work. And again, this makes it ADA accessible. It just makes a lot of sense for our community. This also would be ADA accessible, of course, you'd be able to get off this path and do that. Um, Santa cans can create, you know, problems. They, and especially by the water, so, um, but it was. Everything was loud and clear at those meetings, but that was pretty loud and clear too, so. That's my little joke. Um, let's see, um, and the rest are just, again, very passive. You're just talking about a way to get down there. These are sloped. Just a beach. This might have some logs and rocks, you know, to climb on or sit on, but just very passive in nature. Um, again, enforcement, many requests for increased enforcement, and I know that we've, I've talked to the chief about that. But it's really just patrol and speeding and just if, you know, a presence changes things in a waterfront park setting. So talking with them about just some more enforcement and maybe some more time on the water, you know, they, our marine unit spends a lot of time on uh, lakes, uh, American Lake. But they, they do come out here to the site as well. So just spending more time out here, having a presence. And then just concern regarding maintenance, you know, right now, it's like, you don't do anything. Well, we are out there. I mean, we do some cutting things back. We clean up leaves and things, but there's, you know, we're mowing the dirt. There's not, you know, there's not a lot out there. And so we don't want to invest in a bunch of infrastructure that we don't need if we do an improvement. So um, again, I think we have a pretty good history of once we've made improvements, I think we do a pretty good job of maintenance in all of our parks. And I think um, this would, of course, uh, get on the list to be sustained as well. So um, do you have some specific questions about this? I can talk a little bit about phasing and the grants and the money part. Yeah.
So the pocket beach over here, um, this reminds me of what's, what looks like, what it looks like at American Lake. Where you have the mooring dock here and you get everyone that's jumping off of it, you know, and and playing on this beach. And so that's been problematic over at American Lake. So I just would want to make sure there's some thought given to what people are doing. And how we're, you know, de- detracting from that kind of activity going on. And keeping the boating stuff separate and not letting people just run around and play on the docks and stuff that shouldn't be there.
Yeah, that's, that's a really great point. Um, part of the idea of creating this was is that if you did have, you're launching your boat. You've got some kids, instead of having them running around in the parking lot, is to give them a place to go sit on the log until we get there or on the dock. But that's a great point about jumping off and there can be, that can be solved with some fencing. That's how we solve the problem at American Lake is we actually put the fencing on the one side. So they were jumping that way and jumping out of the loa. So, but that's a great point. We'll take a look at that.
But the fencing still is an issue, cause then you can't put boats on this side, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Eventually this should connect up to Stillton Boulevard, cause that's how we drive down the access, Stillton Boulevard here, so. That connectivity from there, Mount Tacoma Drive would be key.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just focused on this front area, but yeah.
One of the advantages of this being one way, this direction, is that this is uphill. It was one way, the other direction, you'd have people that were just naturally increasing speed coming down into the park. I don't increase that fast. Well, you're, I says the guy who tipped the boat over, right?
Played his cards early on that one. Um, any other questions about the improvements or the um, reasoning behind any? We did, again, in those options, which was a little scary to some folks, we were really just showing all of the different solutions to all the problems that brought, got brought up. Wasn't the intent to do everything on everywhere, but really then to be able to weigh those impacts, so um.
Some people in the meetings talked about submerged stumps and those being a risk to boats and people.
Yeah.
Is there any plan to do anything with those or is that generally out of scope?
Well, we don't, we, we haven't really investigated that yet, but these, this is what um, Councilman Laura Sella, these are all the stumps. And so um, some of the things that we've talked about is can you remove them? We've been told you can't, but other people have said they have. Um, so we would just have to take a look at from a permitting perspective if they would let us do that. The other thing that we've talked about is, um, I think we showed you a picture um, with we, when we had. Yeah, so one of the things we talked about with the stumps is if we could, so again, when you're coming out here, you have less stumps than you do in this area. This is what all these circles are. This is probably floating logs at the time.
Favorite one.
Okay, okay. So we'll put little smiley faces on there. The other thing is, is that one of the things that we are looking at, like with the Nisqually project or looking out at Wahop Lake is. Could you put like some public art on it, like fish on a stick or state, you know, something like that where it was, kind of made it feel a little whimsical? But also was a, hey you, there's a stump here. Yeah, so right now, um, I think some folks have, over the years, put rebar in them, put a cone on them. I mean, it looks pretty ratty, but um, so it would be, can we take them out? Maybe. Um, from a permitting perspective, we haven't gotten to that kind of detail. But could you? Yeah, so um, but that's definitely something that people were interested in. Stumps are scary. And then again, here's the launch now. So people are doing that and then they're power-loading to get on, which I don't know why they do, cause it's a short distance. It's not very far, especially when the water's down. But that creates this power, power-loading is when you go to put on your thing and you go.
Gives you a hump of gravel.
Yeah, but then you blow out the gravel below you. And so you have this big dip here, which maybe helps with launching when it's low. But you have a giant pile of dirt. And so we can actually get in there and pull it from a maintenance perspective. But um, you know. Yeah. You're gonna allow that.
About the two-way, so it's just going to be to this intersection here to go up the street, right?
Yeah.
Where, where's traffic going to be coming from, from going this way?
They're not.
So why make it two-way?
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Um, because the traffic engineers told us that was the way to do it. I'm not, probably, I don't know. I, I have, I, I, I'm not giving you a good answer, cause I'd be making something up. But there's a reason for it. It does make sense, because a traffic engineer would be able to tell you that, but I'll find the answer to that. But it does make sense from.
Thing too, is if you're bringing in a trailer.
Mm-hmm.
You better have a good turn of a trailer and a truck radius.
Yeah, that's, we, yeah, we've actually redesigned this to, to, to be able to handle that. So that's why you've been in, did this. And we had one of.
The thought is they'd come this way, right, to do that?
Yeah, to launch and then come back out this way or park and then come back out.
Mary, can you tell us about the phasing then?
Yeah.
Looks like instructions, you have phase one, phase two and phase three, so we talked about that.
Yeah, so. Yeah, okay. Yeah, so here's, we have three phases and whether you did them one, two or three, it's really um, up to council. But this is phase three, because it's really all transportation. It's really not going to be eligible for grant funding. And so we would probably look at this as a future transportation project, just because um, it wouldn't be eligible, so don't include it. Cause you're providing match, so that doesn't think. Phase one would be looking at the park, basically improvements here. And then this phase would be um, for the boat launch and improvements, because the boat. Well, we, we've said, you know, the boat launch was the biggest deal for everybody. But council can decide. And the boat launch grants aren't due until October.
Okay.
Um, the park grants are due in May, first, May first. So that's why we would be looking at, they'd be coming consecutively, but it's really about funding. So we have to talk about what um, what council direction we would get. But what we wanted to do is just cut the project into doable pieces that also coincided with available funding for different programs.
So there's really no one, two, and really no time on this.
Correct. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and so if, so this would remain two-way.
Time being.
Correct.
Would the, would going one way here be part of phase one?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, if this is what you were doing, if you weren't making those improvements, then you would just.
The way traffic goes now, making it one way tomorrow would be, it would be.
Yeah, it's practically one way now, but there's two cars going through. And so that was the other thing is the head-on collision opportunity when it's being difficult there. So that's that. So that's um, the phasing that we looked at. And, and um, we really looked at what are you allowed to with a boat launch? Um, they are not interested in park amenities, but amenities that support a boat launch, like parking. Like a little area to get your kids safely off there from the grant people. This is ADA access to a little picnic area. You can come and have lunch. So this is about as much as you're going to get on a boat launch thing, so, which is nice. You need to divide it up anyway. And then, so that's the proposed phasing. Um, and then um, the cost estimates, which again.
Is it on our packet?
Yeah. Go sit back down.
Well, I just wanted to see it.
See it a little bit closer, okay.
It's about nine million.
Yeah, and that's, well, no, it's the, they're phased out with phase one, two and three. And if you look at these. And if you look at these things, it's really about adding, if we're really looking at the two year grant cycle, because that's, everything's expensive and to get the funding and the matching, um, to break it up. If you're, the, these have, um, you know, cost escalation built into them. And so the earlier you do something, the less it is, of course. So, um. So that's. That'd be great. Downtown parks, for shoreline parks, for all kinds of parks.
Don't forget the street end.
Street end. Well, you know, the, with the question, so we've got lots of questions like, why don't you just fix the boat launch you have? We can. It was one, it was one of the alternatives. It, uh, it, it could be done. I mean, you're not going to get it any less steep because you have to reconfigure the whole road. So you're really just making it new, but you're still having all the same problems. Yeah, 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 yeah.
That's what I was just extending it out.
You could extend it up. But then you, yeah, you'd have to move the swimming like to another area. So you could, you could, that is an alternative, um, that we considered. So again, this is a master plan for your future. This could be two years, five years, 10 years, 20 years. But this is, you know, with the land that you have now. Now, does that mean down the road, you don't have other opportunities? Absolutely. Okay. Oh, yes. And blind and the tree and. Oops, I'm sorry. And, and as the finale, so, um, if there aren't any more questions about phasing or, um, elements, there was a cost estimate again that was included in your packet. I think it's on a hundred and, let's say a hundred and thirty-five.
Yeah.
Something like that.
One thirty.
One thirty-three. Thank you. So, um, basically we laid this out for you based on a phase one, phase two, phase three approach. Totally if we were going to do it all, but there is an accelerator built into there. So, um, it's just under $9 million, which is an awful lot of money. But, um, anytime that you're dealing with roads and waterfronts and mitigation, which is required. The, the interesting thing is, is that if you put in a new boat launch in one location, you're going to get great credit for taking an old boat, boat launch out. So again, that's really, you don't usually have those opportunities. So, um, but the, um, the permitting folks are the ones that make all those decisions. And of course we follow our own shoreline master plan. We're required to. We have to do all the same permitting that everybody else does. So we have to meet all the same requirements. The idea here was is that if you were going to do one phase at a time and you're going to follow the grant cycles, looking at phase one first, which would be the boat launch. Phase two would be the park. Phase three would be that transportation road project, which could certainly fit in in a different element because it really is kind of a standalone thing itself.
Absolutely.
And then just the thing that we're going to ask for permission, um, at the next meeting is, is that we'd like to, which council's always been supportive of us looking for other, for additional resources to offset the city investment in, um, our park facilities. So we'd be looking at our boat of boating facilities program, uh, ALA, which is aquatic land enhancement. We've been successful with that twice for American Lake. Well, once for Harry Todd, once for American Lake. And then water access. We were also, um, successful getting that for American Lake. So, um, so that's Edgewater Park Master Plan.
So here are a couple of points in the interim. I think it's wonderful. The one comment or the series of comments I heard loudly and clearly over the last six to 12 months. Uh, we got to at least maintain that which we have. So if we don't have phase one, phase two or phase three completed, we at least got to keep it clean. See what we can do to take out some of the invasive, you know, blackberries now. So people can actually enjoy or use what we have and police it, right?
Yeah.
Trash pickup and security. So at least we got to do that. Otherwise they'll never trust us.
Yeah.
Even if we build it out phase one, two and three, then we are honorably discharging our duties to keep it safe and clean.
Yeah. We, we are down there cleaning it up, cleaning up storm debris. The blackberries have been cut back quite a bit. And, uh, we did a big project last summer. We did a project this fall and we'll be back there on Park Appreciation Day doing some work. And the youth corps will be back this summer, so. Thank you. Appreciate your service.
Thank you, Mary. I, um, just to play off of the mayor's comment. So you had mentioned about, he talked about, you know, policing it, making sure that in all of the phases, you said that the Santa Can was going to go down there at beginning of phase one or?
Uh, the Santa Can, if we didn't build phase one that had a Portland Lou, then, and we were just keeping the launch where it was at, we would put a Santa Can near the launch as part of the park development.
So there would be something there.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
Mr. Laura Sella.
Thank you.
Uh, is there an opportunity on Parks Appreciation Day for people to help out at Edgewater Park or just the other parks that are listed?
Um, I'm not sure that Edgewater is one of our sites for Park Appreciation Day, but we did have a group down there last year for Park Appreciation Day, even though it wasn't on our schedule. So are you interested in doing some work down there on Park Appreciation Day?
Absolutely.
We can do that.
That is one busy day, I have to say with all the events.
Yes, we are having a ribbon cutting at noon, so you can only work till 11:30 and then come over. I'll give you a new ball cap.
And it's recycle day and it's Lakewood Road running day. So, yeah, busy day. Well, fabulous work. And while the Parks Board folks are here, I just want to say thank you for your professionalism, your steadfast work on this. Uh, as we say amidst the din of both controversy and well-meaning comments, uh, it's really important to the future of the city to flesh out the citizen and council's policy objectives for a better community. It's more family friendly and has abundant recreational opportunities for not just the privileged few like me that live on the lake, but for those who would like to have access to the water. So I appreciate your work on that.
We appreciate your support.
Without further ado with Ms. Dodsworth, thank you. And we'll turn now to a brief review of those items. Ten will be scheduled for the April 15, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting. You'll see on your agenda tonight, all the significant items set for meeting on the 15th. And now we'll turn to reports by Mr. Coffield.
Evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Uh, just a few brief updates. Uh, the first, I think, as you heard earlier from Ms. Helder, on April 22nd, several of your state legislators will be here to give you an update on, um, on the state, the recent, uh, state legislative session. So we have confirmations from Senator Nobles and Representatives Levitt and, and Mena. So, um, at least three will be here, three of the six. Um, also wanted to let you know, I know I reported last week that the Lakewood Library Board of Trustees is, um, beginning their process to have a discussion about the future of permanent libraries in Lakewood, both in the downtown area and then perhaps in the Tillicum neighborhood as well. They are, um, scheduling, um, an open public meeting on Saturday, April 20th, from 1:30 to 3:30 over at their headquarters, um, in the incorporated area of Pierce County to begin focusing on the downtown Lakewood library. So just wanted to alert you to that. And we're going to send out some information so that the community is aware of that as, as well.
And they can zoom in potentially to that meeting?
I, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't have that, the specifics. But once we have the specifics, we'll be able to share that, Mayor. Um, and then, uh, lastly, just, uh, friendly reminder that Association of Washington Cities is having their annual conference from June 18th through the 21st, which is a Tuesday through a Friday. But really the bulk of the conference is on Wednesday and Thursday. And so, um, I know Councilmember Branstadter, um, and, and Deputy Mayor Moss have, uh, said that they're going to be attending. But if any of the other, uh, council members wish to attend, please let myself or the city clerk know and we can get you registered and try and get you into hotel room as well. It's in Vancouver this year, Vancouver, um, Washington, not the real Vancouver.
Great.
So with that, that's my report.
What? Rabidie is not your middle name, Mr. Coffield. Thank you.
Going back to my notes, Mayor, let me start from the top.
Mr. Laura Sella.
Just a quick question on the, on the library. Do you know if it's still the intent that the interim library, because it's being built in a modular way, could potentially be moved down to the Tillicum location?
So I've, I've heard that, um, Councilmember Laura Sella. So I believe that is a possibility.
I'll have the clerk get.
One thirty to three thirty. It's on a Saturday.
Yeah.
April 20th.
Ms. Schumacher, do you mind? Well, when we get the library information from the city manager's report, just shoot out a calendar thing so it's on the council calendar. That'd be great. Any else, Mr. Coffield?
Unless you want something else.
We always want more, of course. Okay, well, thank you. So, um, I'm going to turn to council comments briefly, but just to recognize, folks, we've got two executive session periods and all recesses into after you're done with council comments. So I will start with Mr. Boki, since he is pushing for an earlier termination timeframe.
Well, after, uh, Ms. Bell told us the other day that the, you know, you need to kind of get within better timeframes. I've decided to push on this. She, all I have is the shape meeting. We got our legislative update, um, informative. It kind of dovetails with, uh, what we heard earlier tonight from Ms. Helder. They actually came fairly close on a couple of items that would really take away, basically observe, usurp, uh, cities' ability to, to deal with things. Basically, it was, uh, considered a legislation that would have allowed the state to permit affordable housing if cities were creating barriers. And they will consider this next year. So, you know, they're working towards just taking away permitting from the cities. Uh, and the same would go with shelters too. So there was another piece of legislation dealing with shelters. They're working on the work plan and it sounds like they're going to, uh, Jason wants, Jason Godey wants to come, um, and talk about the work plan with the city and with us. And the property tax exemption seminar, which has been going around the county, is scheduled, uh, here in Lakewood on Wednesday, June 12th, right in these chambers. Thank you.
Very good.
Laura Sella. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciated the overview of Edgewater Park, uh, the master plan. And, uh, I just want to remind everyone that our parks and our lakes are, uh, are for all of us in the city, uh, not just, uh, the, the few who are fortunate enough to live on the lakes. Thank you.
Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, I would just like to add to that. I think that they're, all of the presentations are very informative. I think that it keeps us, um, up to date, even though some of the information we've heard before. I like that it keeps it fresh. And so I wanted to thank staff and everybody else who presented today. Thank you.
Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I just wanted to recognize the Parks Board and Parks on doing a great job with the, uh, public hearings and taking all the bashings and, um, yeah, getting, getting through that. So that was, that's a big step. Um, the, the one question I had was about, uh, the H Barn project. And did we need to provide any direction to city manager about where that project ranks in our lists of things? And, and if we wanted to, um, pursue, ha- ha- have, have the city pursue any sort of, um, partnerships, uh, with that? So that was just a food for thought on that one.
Something we can certainly chat about at a later date, I think, where we're going in direction on that. So, okay. Very good. Mr. Branstadter.
Well, I was, um, glad that I had the opportunity to, uh, attend, uh, the Mayor, Mayor Emeritus, uh, retired general Harrison's Memorial, um, that was there. I thought that the, and I was, uh, um, in one respect, I was surprised that there were not more people there. Um, on the, on the other hand, I was, uh, very appreciative and I would be complimentary to the, uh, to the honor guard that did the military honors ceremony. I have seen a lot of those and I know that they can go wrong, but this one went extremely well. Okay. Uh, and, and, and was done. On, on Wednesday, I'm going to attend the collaboration, uh, meeting here. There, you know, all the different agencies that are part of that are going to be receiving, uh, uh, information about how to work with, uh, the police department's behavioral health contact team and, um, and, and the other information that they'll share. And on Thursday, I'm going to attend, uh, Councilmember Hitchens sponsored, uh, what is emerging as a, as a, as a, as a homelessness solutions brainstorming session. Uh, and I'll, 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 I'll see where that goes.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have.
But do you have any comments? Okay, just a few updates. I think I already mentioned last Monday I had the shadow with Angel Calderon. So again, the communications folks put out kind of a nice little piece with, uh, Angel and I this last week. So that was fun. Uh, on, uh, Friday, I met with our police chief and, uh, members of the Tacoma Country and Golf Club to review concerns they had about safety uh, around the golf course, especially with the issues with the open access and then the pending road improvements for the interconnector road. So they've suffered all sorts of interesting break-ins. And so I was very pleased that the chief, uh, had great interaction with them. And they gave me laudatory comments about Lakewood's response to their concerns. So I appreciate it, Mr. Coffield, uh, both you and the chief, making that a priority for them. They, they felt, uh, heard and appreciated. So that was good. The Harrison event, uh, on Saturday was, I thought, a, a very fine event and recognized a true leader here for our community. And I was pleased to be a part of that. So it was nice to see many, many folks in the community. Tonight I was at the Pierce Transit Commission meeting. Nothing too significant, uh, tonight, except recognition of the impacts that the runner service seems to be having in its zones throughout the community. And so they're seeing ridership increase, which is great. And they're getting good positive feedback from that. So more to follow on that as hopefully it, uh, comes south to Lakewood a little bit. It's already at JBLM to some extent. This Thursday and Friday, Deputy Mayor, myself and city manager will be traveling to Washington DC to meet with our congressional delegation and advocate for, um, park issues, shall we say. We're looking at the, there's a thing called the Raze Grant. We'll tell you more about that, but that's an opportunity for funding for the green loop and certainly other park, uh, projects and amenities. So we will report back. And at this time, the council will recess into executive session for about 20 minutes pursuant to RCW 4231101B to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate and for a, an additional 10 minute period pursuant to RCW 4231101I to discuss with legal counsel litigation or potential litigation. We are not expected to take any action following the executive session other than to adjourn this meeting. And so with that, we'll be now in recess.